Is that a gavel pound?
No, this is the gavel.
I was gonna say.
But that's the alternate gavel.
He's in my phone. All right, I'd like to call the order, the Washington County Board of Commissioners meeting at this time. We always start our meetings with an invocation and pledge allegiance. Today's invocation will be given by Father Sebastian, the St. George Catholic Church. Please come up and lead us in prayer.
On the name of the Father and the Son and the Holy Spirit, amen. Lord God, thank you for this moment to give us together with my brothers and sisters here in this place. We ask you to send upon us your Holy Spirit to bring peace, to bring consolation, to bring liberation and to guide, oh Lord, this moment. You know that without your wisdom, we can do nothing. It is why we call you, oh Lord, to come upon us, to bring here in this place, your Holy Spirit, to help my brothers and sisters for this meeting, oh Lord. You know that Washington County is, oh Lord, part of your gift for our people here around. Lord, we know that our people needs, okay, Lord, many things. Give us, oh Lord, your wisdom to know how can we be, oh Lord, in this place as leaders, to be, oh Lord, people needs, oh Lord, many things, services, and bring, oh Lord, in our hearts in this moment, your Holy Spirit to help us, oh Lord, and to help our county, oh Lord, to grow every day. And we know that people is coming from all the United States, coming here in our city, oh Lord. And you know that people is coming because it's good to be here, it's good to live here. And send, oh Lord, in my brothers and sisters, the leaders, bringing peace, bringing, oh Lord, communion, bringing, oh Lord, peace in our families, in our, this city, oh Lord. We know that, Lord Jesus, people needs peace. Yes, it is why people is coming. Good earth here, thank you, Lord, for give us this beautiful county, oh Lord. Thank you for your presence, oh Lord, we ask you to be with us, to be with my brothers and sisters here in this place. And all is not in your will, oh Lord. Bring them outside in this place. May your Holy Spirit guide our brothers and sisters. People is coming, oh Lord, to be here in this meeting, bring, oh Lord, peace, bring consolation. And your people needs many things, more and more and more. I know that, Lord, my brothers and sisters, they are here to look how together we can be together, how, oh Lord, together we can live here, how, oh Lord, we can offer services to our people. Thank you, Lord, for your presence. Bless us, oh Lord, bless my brothers and sisters, be with them, oh Lord. Send upon them, oh Lord, your wisdom to give all the best they are and they have in their hearts. Oh Lord Jesus, we ask all this, oh Lord, in the beloved name of your Son, Jesus, who lives and reigns with you in the unity of the Holy Spirit, one God, forever and ever. Amen.
Amen. Thank you very much, appreciate that. Father Sebastian.
John Myers.
Okay, this time I'd like to ask our own Deputy Brock Bentley to get up and lead us in the pledge allegiance.
The audience, please rise. Follow me in the pledge of allegiance. I pledge allegiance to the flag.
Of the United States of America and to the Republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, omnipotent, and just for all.
Thank you, you can be seated.
Thank you very much. First item is the consent agenda. The consent agenda is a means of expediting routine matters which come before the commission for approval. The consent portion of the agenda is approved by one non-debatable motion. If any commissioner wishes to remove an item from the consent portion of the agenda, that item becomes the first order of business on the regular agenda.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion to approve today's consent agenda consisting of items A through E on our published agenda as outlined.
Mr. Chairman, I would second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
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 Aye, motion passes. We move to the regular portion of our agenda, and the first item is consideration of purchase requests by Ray Boyer.
Okay, the first one here is for advertising for tourism, and that is a total of thirty-two thousand and ten dollars. And here's another tourism advertising for thirty-three thousand nine hundred and ninety-eight dollars. And the third one for tourism is a production video for Marathon for a total of eleven thousand five hundred dollars. The last one is a blanket P.O. for culinary items out at the jail for forty thousand dollars. And unless there's any questions, that is all.
Very good. Well, with that, Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we accept the purchase requests that have been outlined, these four purchase requests.
I'll second that motion.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Do not, I, the second item is Sheriff's Office in regards to emergency services, but I don't see Corey here, so.
Darrell's on his way, so if we want to come back to that.
Okay.
Mr. Chairman, I'd make a motion that we, what, table that or just move on?
Just move it maybe to the end.
Move it to the end when Sergeant Cashman can make it.
I'll second the motion.
So we have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Item number three is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three sixty-six, a resolution approving a ham radio repeater station use agreement. And we have Pete here talk about this item.
As a side note, Darrell just walked in.
We'll give you a chance to catch your breath.
The county maintains several repeater sites, including one on Segmiller. In those sites, we have a repeater presence for ham radio. Private person who has a ham radio repeater in one of those sites, and this just formalizes the agreement, which allows that to be there. Sites are used primarily for day-to-day communication by ham radio operators, but they are available in emergencies and allow us to have a backup for the public safety system should our repeater systems fail or have.
Mr. Chairman, I'll make a comment on that as well, and then I will recuse myself. Back in about nineteen eighty-nine, my brother and I votes the BLM for permission to install a couple of amateur repeaters on Segmiller Peak. It was a fantastic site, provided excellent communications for almost the entire county. Later, when I went to work county, I assumed responsibility for the sheriff's office repeaters, and because of our experience with the Segmiller site, Segmiller became the destination for not only a search and rescue and a SWAT, but also a regular sheriff's office repeater. It's a really great site. And so I had kept stuff with us in agreement with the BLM, and the county has kept stuff there with an agreement with the BLM. And here about a month ago, the BLM came and gave that communications site, not the real estate, but the ConX box, the solar panels, things that belonged to the BLM, gave those to Washington County, and Washington County is now the owner of that site. Because of that fact, I had those two repeater sites. Here a couple of years ago, I gave one of the repeater sites in totality to Washington County Emergency Services, but I had retained one for general ham use with, and it's always been available for emergencies, but I hadn't donated it, and I had an agreement with the BLM that actually ran till the end of two thousand eighteen, and that's where we're at anyway. So this agreement would allow me to keep that there, make it available for emergency use, and gives me the right, which I will eventually take advantage of, to donate that county at some date in the future. And so because of my ownership and involvement with that, I've stated the conflict. I could vote on it, but I choose to recuse and allow you to make that decision.
Very good.
This gives us a lot of a.
No kidding, we can do all kinds.
Yeah.
No, I, I think it's great, and I appreciate that. It's just an example of the years of service that Commissioner Cox has given to this county in emergency service and taking care of these things. Appreciate that. So I'd make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three sixty-six, a resolution approving a ham radio repeater station use agreement.
I'll be happy to second that. So we have a motion and a second, all, well, the two of us who are in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Thank you. Oh, no, thank you for what you've done, I mean, the service to the county. Cashman, Darrell Cashman, want to come up and give us the emergency service report?
What I just heard was a motion to amend the agenda to put emergency service report at the next item. That's what I thought I heard.
Yeah.
Must have been.
I apologize. That slurry work they're doing on SR9 is making it difficult getting in and out of the office.
It is.
So what I have here is, I have the report from August twenty-first through September seventeenth. We did eight additional calls, search and rescue calls in that period of time, which brings our total to ninety-six for the year. Total man-hours on this is two hundred and twenty-five. On the twenty-fifth of August, we had an injured mountain biker off Clavicle Hill. Called that for a reason, because apparently they might have broken their clavicle. St. George fired Gold Cross, and the SAR teams went out there, they located her, did call Lifelight in because she'd lost consciousness and been out for quite a while, and she was flown. But I do believe that she'll, she's fine now. I had a lost hiker on the first of September on Red Mountain. The call was that they were possibly legged up, it was nighttime. Gentleman tried to find his way off, and once it got dark, he had no way. Sent search and rescue up there, they did locate him, got him some water and got him off the hill. He was checked by EMS, but he refused any transport. On the third of September, we had an ill person off Pacoon Flats. Apparently, there's a family that's been staying out there, but no more than fourteen days in one spot. But the gentleman was actually unconscious, and so they had to rush him to the hospital. On the ninth of this month, we had the Coacapelli Try, hundred and eighty-three people went into the water, and we only had to pull one oxygen. On the eleventh, we had an ill motorcyclist out in Warner Valley. That one was difficult in locating. Once we did locating with Hurricane EMS, we actually had to fly him by Mercy Air to DRMC in critical condition. And that was due to heat stroke. So I know he is recovering, but it's touch and go for a while with that twenty-five-year-old man from, wasn't used to our heat. On the twelfth, again, we had a lost hiker up on Red Mountain. You can kind of see that trend, Red Mountain thing. Fifty-two-year-old male got off trail, ran out of water. We sent three SAR teams in, located the male in there, the Snow Canyon overlook, brought him out, it's pretty straightforward. On the fifteenth, we had a lost subject on the Virgin River behind Purgatory. He was actually on the, it'd be the south side of the hill, but down by the river, but he was up on the mountain. We had to go around and access him through the backside of the county jail, went over the mountain, pulled him off of there, and he was taken in. He said he'd been out there for four days without food and water, but he wasn't that far off from, so I don't know, there may be some other issues with that gentleman, but he was transported. And then on the fifteenth, we had, again, later that day, we had a call by Sand Hollow State Park, they requested our dive team respond. Had high winds, high waves, multiple people stranded, and a sixteen-foot boat that had gone down. Luckily, no one lost their life on it, everybody was recovered, and the dive team pulled up the boat and brought it back into the dock. Kind of gives you a rundown of what we've. This weekend, just so you know, we have a two-day search and rescue conference out at Sand Hollow that Washington County Sheriff's Office sponsors. About a hundred and sixty people from the state of Utah, all different search and rescues coming, running scenarios, helicopter scenarios, high-angle scenarios, hoisting, diving, underwater ROVs, drones, so they can all get a little taste of everything or get training on everything. So it'll be going on for a couple of days, the Sheriff's Ride Saturday afternoon, and I would just want to invite any of you who would like to come out and go on the Sheriff's Ride or participate in it.
Thank you, appreciate you.
All that you do for our county. Thank you for all that you do, the county.
Darrell, you guys are really gonna have to slow the pace up, though, or you're gonna set a new record, so.
We're not looking to set a record.
Item number four is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-one, a resolution approving a jail medical service agreement between Washington County and Dr.
Grigla.
Griglia. And we have Jake with the Sheriff's Office here to talk about it.
So we've got a proposed agreement, medical services agreement between Washington County and Dr. David Grigla, provide medical services at Purgatory Correction. Fortunately, our contract physician for the past fifteen-plus years is even the state's other professional opportunities, so. Talked to Dr. Grigla, he's reviewed the contract. Guys, if you have any questions about the contract in particular.
So do we administer prescriptions?
We do.
So if Prop Two passes, are we gonna let people smoke pot if they're prescribed it?
I'm thinking probably not.
Okay. Just curious, I mean, this is, opens up a whole dynamic of concerning issues, but.
And we haven't discussed it directly with Dr. Grigla yet, but I think he'll be on the same page.
From what they say, though, it should stop crime. I mean, it heals everything else.
And our commissary sales will go way up, too.
Yeah, very good.
So how much more from the budget is this than that last contract?
It's gonna be a thousand dollars a month higher than the previous contract, which hadn't been adjusted in fifteen-plus.
Now, that was, over time, that'd be a very good deal.
And you guys saw proposals from this, correct?
Yes.
This went out, and you got multiple doctors.
And it's a professional services contract. I know Dr. Grigla, he's a neighbor, he's an outstanding doctor, I think.
We think so, too.
Mr. Chairman, I would make a motion in support of resolution R two thousand eighteen twenty-three seventy-three, a resolution approving an interlocal, excuse me, I've got the number wrong, two thousand eighteen twenty-three seventy-one, a resolution approving a jail medical services agreement, Washington County and Dr. David Grigla.
I'll second that motion.
A motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes.
Thank you.
Item number five is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-three, a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative agreement between Washington County and Laverkan City for animal impound and sheltering services. And Brock Bentley's here, Sheriff's Office.
Yes, so this was taken care of by Undersheriff James Stanley. I got a crash course in it earlier, so I'm here to represent him. The contract, initially, what I was told was gonna be a flat fee of, I think, twenty-three or twenty-five hundred a month, but they, they decided to go a different route, which was go down to fifteen hundred a month. And then when we have a animal that is being taken care of by Laverkan City Animal Shelter, it would be ten dollars a day per animal during that time that the county would fund. So it actually, fiscally, it saves us a lot of money over time. We don't typically have a lot of animals that are in there, it's not an every day, every week, every month thing. So over time, it's a lot of savings there.
I'd like to congratulate the Sheriff's Office for reaching out with Laverkan, and I know they're working with Ivans as well. And these interlocal cooperation agreements, I believe, are very good for our taxpayers because it allows us to share the expense and lower the cost. Costs is far more than that.
Yes.
We tried to, running a facility independently by ourselves, I mean, couldn't even pay the power bill.
Yeah, for sure. Well, and if I could just say, having worked with Chief Lee, Sergeant Kraus over there, they've been phenomenal in helping us in times. As, as the county grows, we're getting a lot more of the animal stray problem, and a lot of times, we're in a rock and hard place. So to be able to have a place to go is just, it's been a great asset for us, for sure.
Super. Yeah, I'd echo what Commissioner Cox says, I mean, this is a great thing for the county, and I think it's gonna be really good for Laverkan City as well, as they're running their shelter and helping them out, so. It's gonna be good. We've had a lot of discussion about animal welfare, and I think we'll continue to have one, but I think this is, this is a great remedy. Mr. Chairman, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-three, a resolution approving an interlocal cooperative agreement, animal pound and sheltering service between Washington County and Laverkan City.
I'll second.
Have a motion and a second, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes, thank you.
I also contribute to Laverkan City Animal Shelter every time my dog decides to run off. I think I was up to two hundred dollars last year, so. One of these days, master isn't gonna come looking for you.
Consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-four, a resolution approving an easement agreement between Patricia Matthews, trustee of the Matthews Family Trust, and Washington County for construction and maintenance of a storm drainage system. And our county engineer, Todd Edwards, is here to present on that.
Oh, commissioners, this is the first of, we hope, many easements out in the Damrem Valley area. We're looking to start doing some work out there to fix some of the problems we had, we recognized from the flooding. And this is the first one, Mrs. Matthews agrees to give us a fifteen-foot easement along the side of her property to construct a ditch that will help us not only in the short term, but, but long term, get water through her property and. I don't know if you have any questions.
I think that's great, Todd. I know that you've been actively helping us engineer solutions to the problems in Damrem Valley, and, and these easements is a major impediment to moving forward with implementing a good fix. I appreciate your work on that. I'd make a motion in support of resolution two thousand eighteen twenty-three seventy-four, a resolution approving an easement agreement between Patricia L. Matthews, trustee of the Matthews Family Trust, and Washington County for the construction and maintenance of a storm drainage system.
I'll second that, and I'd also like to thank Todd for all the hard work. I felt like he earned his money that one night when we were up at the fire station especially, but he's just not a fan.
You still owe me for that one.
Yeah.
No, it was fun, and we have had a great support from the people in Damrem Valley, it's been amazing. Right after a flood, of course, you're gonna have a lot of support for people trying to fix it, but it's very well-received, and everybody's more than helpful to say, hey, you can hotline or put it across my property.
Very good. I think we've accepted a contract we'll talk about later.
Yes.
Vote on, look at, so, great.
Well, we have, we have a motion and a second, so I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion passes. Hey, Todd, would you also make sure you express our appreciation to Patricia Matthews for, I mean, that's, thank you. Item number seven, consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-five, a resolution to recommend designations for governor's petition regarding the U.S. Forest Service roadless rule area within Washington County. County Attorney's Office Celeste is here to present.
So the, the areas in question were designated roadless areas under the Forest Service roadless rule in, I think, two thousand. And now our governor's office is petitioning the Secretary of Agriculture to have more control over how these roadless areas are managed. Some other states have already done it. We're sort of copying the Idaho model. And, and that model is that we're categorizing the roadless areas that already exist within our national forest based on what level of management we want to be allowed on those areas. To be clear, it is the governor's office petition, they've asked the counties to weigh in on how we'd like those areas classified, and that's what we'd be doing here with, with this. Any of our areas that overlap wilderness or are wilderness-like, we've, I've put on that map as the, the most restrictive, basically what they are right now as part of the roadless rule. Most of the areas in the county I put in a category two, which means they'd be managed for recreation, so new trails could be put in, and some vegetation treatment could be done. And then we have one area that's a timber, possibly a timber area, it is mostly in Kane County, but overlaps into Washington County. We put that as a category three because that can be managed for timber. Did that to be consistent with the polygon on the other side of the county line.
Thank you. You know, I'd like to make a comment on the hard work that Celeste's done, making these polygons and working on this map. But Celeste's been working with the county for several years now. And we're unfortunately losing her, but for a good cause, to the Water Conservancy District. She is a, I feel, premier public lands attorney in the state of Utah. And to have had her working for Washington County as we worked through our resource management plans and, and the different BLM planning stages that we've been involved with, it's been a joy to have her. So, thank you, Celeste.
Thank you.
I can remember when she was just a, just a young one coming out of law school, and I don't know if you guys remember, we put the, the resource management plan onto Scott Messel downstairs. And we'd go down there and check on him, and he was really, really starting to twitch. And then all of a sudden, Celeste showed up, and he'd just become a happier person after that. She, she took that workload on and did that resource management plan, and, and then she's just done a lot of other great things. And more than anything, she's just been a joy to have around. I'm really concerned about this employer that she's gonna go to, though.
Are you guys trying to make me cry in a public meeting, going to bed?
But, but no, I mean, I wish I could amend this resolution to add some sort of compliment to Celeste, but this is a, just another example of the hard work she does for the county, so.
I still don't have a motion or a second.
Wait and see who's gonna make the motion.
I'll make a motion that we pass the Celeste Malloy Resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-five, a resolution that recommended designations for the governor's petition regarding the U.S. Forest Service roadless rule areas within Washington County.
And I will second the resolution, Celeste Malloy, R two thousand eighteen twenty-three seventy-five.
We, we have a motion and a second. I'll call the vote, all in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Aye, motion carries. Item number eight is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eight dash twenty-three seventy-six, a resolution approving Amendment Six to an agreement between the U.S. Department of Agriculture, Natural Resources Conservation Services, and Washington County regarding the provision of funds for plan and design of rehabilitation of Frog Hollow, Free Basin, and for design of the Ivans Dam, one through six.
What would you like to know about that?
Awesome.
Yeah.
The purpose for this amendment is to extend the period of performance, update some of the contract information. We put some more milestones in there as to when these things will come due, and also increase the amount of funding for it. I've got a schedule here, you should have it in yours, too, that tells you what the dates are. And on the last page there, when these things are gonna come into play. July fifteenth, they were supposed to have had a ninety percent design done on the Ivans, one through six dams, final, final design done November, start construction on those the first of the year. And those are a series of small debris basins around the Red Mountain over there that catches a lot of floodwater that comes off that and diverts it away from the town. And then Frog Hollow's the other one, it's, it's running a little farther behind. It's supposed to have the ninety percent design done in June of two thousand nineteen, complete final design in September two thousand nineteen, and then start construction of October next year, so. Basically, just the extension of time, giving us more money to add to construction into it, setting some milestones in there, so we have some benchmarks for it.
While we're passing out accolades, Ron, you've worked very well, along with the Natural Resources Conservation Service, and it has benefited the county immensely, partnerships that you've entered into with various communities, so thank you. I'd make a motion in support of R two thousand eighteen twenty-three seventy-six, a resolution approving Amendment Six to an agreement between the U.S. Department of Agriculture between the U S Department of Agricultural Natural Resource Conservation Service and Washington County regarding the provision of funds for planning and design for rehabilitation of the Frog Hollow Debris Basin and for design of the Ivans Dams one through six.
I'll second that motion.
We have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
Aye.
Thanks, Ron.
Thanks, Ron.
Item number nine is consideration of resolution number R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-seven, a resolution approving an agreement between Washington County and Progressive Contracting Inc. constructing flood repairs and drainage improvement in Damrem Valley, Utah. Todd.
Uh, we send out for proposals, uh, for work on an hourly basis, uh, because it's an ongoing design construct project as we, we find, um, improvements to make up in Damrem Valley and get the easements that we're doing right now. We wanted to get to work as quick as possible. Uh, we got four replies from, uh, local contractors, all of them we happen to have worked with, and all of them were excellent. Uh, we went through the costs on the hourly basis. Uh, each of them had different equipment, so it wasn't apples and apples in every way, but but we looked at the total of what equipment they had in common. We also looked at what equipment we would probably be using most. And Progressive Contracting had the lowest price, had very good reputation, references, and had the ability to start immediately. Recommend we prove this contract with them, up to a hundred thousand dollars.
Very good, Mr. Chairman. Um, I'd like to make a motion that we adopt resolution R dash two thousand eighteen dash twenty-three seventy-seven, resolution approving agreement between Washington County, the county, and Progressive Contracting, Inc., P C I, for constructing flood repair and drainage improvements in Damrem Valley, Utah.
Second.
So we have a motion and a second. All in favor say aye.
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 Motion passes. Come to item number ten, which is Commissioner report.
Dean has good news on Northern Corridor, I think.
Oh, uh, yeah, seems like.
Commissioner Cox, sorry.
Oh, you're, you're good.
Informalities.
Uh, seems like we're continuing to extend some of our, our great leadership and Zach has been on the tourism board and represented us really well. Uh, this past week I've put on the, uh, Board of Economic Development Corporation of Utah and have been nominated by U A C to fill the remainder of Zach's term on the Utah Tourism Board. I know I've got some big shoes to fill figuratively because I think my feet are bigger than his literally. Uh, he's been an outstanding leader and, and has done a great job for us, and I look forward to continuing his work. And work, working with Brittany and our, uh, group here to, uh, represent Washington County well and make sure that we're doing the most that we can for our area.
Excellent.
Commissioners, if I may, um, I just came from a meeting at the Utah Department of Transportation building where the state of Utah officially delivered to the local B L M office our ride-away application for the Northern Corridor, um, which is a significant step in, in the process that the county and the state are working towards in, in getting that road permitted to be built. And, and I would like to congratulate Commissioner Cox again for his work on that and moving that along. And, and it's an exciting thing that, I guess, it was sent into B L M electronically and B L M responded back that they had to receive it with wet signatures on it. So officially, it was submitted today.
Okay, great. And, uh, the one to the B L M is in. There's still another one that'll be very similar to that that goes next to the, uh, Fish and Wildlife Service.
Well, so the Fish and Wildlife Service.
Marcus tells us.
Yeah, and we've, we've applied for H C P renewal to the Fish and Wildlife Service. What we're working through with them is the language of the amendment, like what, what we're gonna ask for in an amendment, and we're kind of bouncing that back and forth still. And, and, and honestly, a lot of stuff is, our next step is to get the Fish and Wildlife Service and the B L M to agree on how the N I P A process is going to work and how they're gonna coordinate their environmental reviews.
Thank you for your hard work on that. This is, this is an exciting time to see uh, some of these pieces coming together that we've been working on for many, many years.
I'd just like to report that September eighth, we had our public lands cleanup in conjunction with, uh, September eleventh, Patriots Day, we had three cleanups, uh, one on Cottonwood Road, one in Mill Creek, and then one over on, uh, Lavercan Overlook. I went to the Lavercan Overlook one and, um, I took my two little boys with me. At first, they were not too excited. But, um, I told them it was kind of like gathering Easter eggs, except for different, you know, we were gathering all kinds of things. And, um, they really enjoyed it and, and this has been my experience on all of these cleanups is how fun they are to get out with, with people and just, I'm always impressed with how many people just come out on these Saturday mornings and really just help clean up. On the one thing, uh, where we were at, we did get quite a bit of garbage, but surprisingly, it wasn't as much as what I expected. So I, I think our message is getting out there and, um, and that's good.
Thank you. I'd just like to recognize that it is U S Constitutional Week this week, so it's a good time to read the Constitution or if you haven't already, or it's kind of a good reminder. All right, seeing that there's no other actionable item on the agenda, I will adjourn the meeting. Thank you.